Okay, so let's continue. So I will try to give a summary actually of this last part of the course related to planetary ionosphere. Now, I had quite maybe long introduction, but I will maybe skip some slides and anyways it will be uploaded on the website, the presentation, so you will have it. You will have all these slides. So I mentioned in the morning that there is two interfaces with the solar wind. So the magnetopause, an external interface, and the internal one, internal one is the ionosphere. And actually, the ionosphere can be is one of, is an example of a multi-MHD approach, actually. The solar wind, we consider the plasma as one fluid, but the ionosphere is different. We, we should for the MHD equation, we should write them for each ion species that we have. Also here, we have an additional term really, which includes actually the ion or the collisions between the species that we are considering. And in the continuity equation, you would see here that we have two terms, the S are the source terms and the sources are related, while usually photoionization or the energetic particles. And the lost terms, they would be related to the chemical reactions or the recombination or charge exchange, actually. So maybe very quickly, some history about the ionosphere. So ionosphere was discovered in 1901 by also an Italian, Markoni, who actually was performing first radio signal transmission and across the Atlantic Ocean, actually. And he could perform this experiment successfully. So ionosphere was kind of discovered accidentally, actually. And many years later on, the success of his experiment was interpreted by the presence, there should be a kind of conductive layer in the atmosphere that is making this experiment possible. And well, in 1926, the word ionosphere was invented to characterize this layer in the atmosphere. Okay, how do we measure, I mean, the ionosphere? We knew the altitude of the ionosphere. This kind of plot is called ionogram. And basically by transmitting a wave, a kind of train of waves at different, let's say, well, frequency, because they get reflected by the ionosphere, we can kind of estimate the altitude of the ionosphere. And here, so the Y axis is the altitude as a function of the wave frequency. And you see, so this is the signature of the reflected waves from the ionosphere and most of them are between 400 and let's say 600 kilometers. So that's the altitude of the ionosphere on Earth, actually. And you would, you can see that above six megahertz, above this frequency, there is, there is no reflections of the waves. So the waves just propagates and go into space. And that's, that's actually what we call the cut-off frequency of the wave. So all the waves which are lower than this frequency will be reflected. And this phenomena, I mean, the reflection of the wave, we can, it happens from Earth, but also can happen from space. So there is lots of, in the electromagnetic spectrum, for instance, the very large wavelength waves, they are also blocked by the atmosphere and reflected into space. Okay. So as you all know, the ionosphere plays a very important role in our communications and the GPS signal. And also because it's, it's made of charged particles, it's very sensitive to any kind of changing of the magnetic or electric conditions in space. It doesn't want to move. Okay. Okay, so here, just a profile, actually. So the altitude profile on both figures. In the first one of the neutral gas, so of the atmosphere, and the second plot is of the plasma density. And here, the red curve is the density of the neutrals and the blue curve is the temperature of the neutrals. And these different, well, at this different altitude, we have the different layers of the atmosphere, troposphere, stratosphere, metasphere. And these different layers are actually controlled by the changes of the temperature in the atmosphere of Earth. However, this is the second plot here. It shows the profile of the ionosphere of Earth. And now the structure of the ionosphere of Earth is not controlled by the electron temperature, but more by the electron densities. And here you see the different, well, at least here we have three layers, region F, E and D. The solid line is the ionosphere during daytime and the dashed line is during the night side. And you see, of course, as expected, because the ionosphere is formed mainly by photoionization due to the EUV solar radiation. During the nighttime, the electron density is much higher than the night side. But then, we still have relatively important electron number densities in the night side and that's because of the rotation of the Earth and also the transport of the plasma from the day side to the night side. And so there are two basic requirements to form the ionosphere. Well, first, you need to have a neutral atmosphere. And the second requirement is the presence of a source of ionization of these gases. And this ionization can be due either by photoionization, so from the photons and/or from energetic particles coming from the solar winds or from the magnetosphere itself. So this is just an example, actually, of ionization by absorption of extreme EUV light with, so on the atom here, the oxygen, which would give positive ions plus free electrons. Yes? Yes. You mean for the oxygen, the atom? You're talking about monoatomic oxygen, just? Yes. Well, it depends on the altitude, actually, yes. No, no. No, it's. So it's, so it's just the composition of the atmosphere of, so it's basically, the atmosphere, I can show this plot. They are, the dense. Yeah. You see here, this is the profile of the density of the neutral atmosphere. I mean, at this here, we don't show the composition, but the density is much higher at lower altitude than at higher altitude. Now. Let me show. Yes. So this is kind, here I'm showing just the neutral density in Earth's atmosphere. So, so at least, so the dioxide is, the density is really important. So let's say at this altitude. But then due to lots of photochemical, well, this photo dissociation and chemical reactions, then monoatomic oxygen can be as well produced. And of course, there are transport of, yes, but I mean, it's lots of processes that take into account. Okay, so I talked about photoionization. I can skip this. But now, okay, so photoionization is a kind of a source of the forming the ionosphere. Now, we have some other kind of reaction that, from which we lose actually these positively charged ions. And one of them is recombination and recombination always happens. And that's when, so ions are lost by recombining. So they will just gain an electron and this will produce an atom plus a release of energy. And an example of this is what we call air glow, actually. An air glow is just the lights that we, you observe, which represents basically the ionosphere. And it shouldn't be confused actually with auroras, which is formed with a different kind of process. So air growth is very different from the northern lines or the auroras. And then you can have dissociative recombination when you have splitting of a molecule into atoms in excited states. So why actually the profile of the ionosphere is, I mean, the shape is very particular, as I showed you. There is a peak in the ionosphere at a certain altitude. Why is it the case? So actually, this is because it's, and I will show it to you here, maybe more qualitatively, because, so it's like this, because it's the superposition, actually, of the altitude dependence of the particle density and the flux intensity. So. I showed you before, so the, actually, the neutral particle density and the profile decreases exponentially as a function of height. Okay? And actually, we can show, using like Barometric law, actually, that the, this is the expression of the neutral particle density, the profile, and assuming an ideal gas and isothermal temperature. And this density here is written as a function, well, certain N zero density at a certain reference, let's say, height. And then the big H here, I don't know if you're familiar, but it's the so-called scale height. And it's a function of the temperature, well, the mass, basically. And the scale height is basically, it reflects the vertical width of the atmosphere. Because how can you define what is the width of the atmosphere? So we use this quantity to characterize the different, let's say, width or layers. Yes. Yeah, 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 yeah. And surprisingly, it works really very well, actually. Yeah, it's better always to start very simple and.
They say that when you go to up to a mountain, you go uphill, at some point you feel something pressure on your ear, right?
Yeah.
Basically, when you pass some black.
Yes. Higher, yes. Yes. Yeah. So this is how. So this is how the, then, the density of the particles varies as a function of the altitude. Due to gravity mainly, the density of the neutral especially is much higher at lower altitude than at higher altitude. Now, how would you think the flux intensity would vary? Would it vary the same way or? So it will vary in the opposite way, actually. So the intensity of the solar radiation would decrease going down in altitude. Okay? And you can see it directly here. So actually, the combination of this density profile and the intensity of the solar flux is actually gives the ionization kind of rate of the ionosphere. So at high, very high altitude, the density, the neutral particle density is very low. But then, even though the intensity of the solar radiation is very important, but we don't have much neutral to ionize. So, well, this is why the ionization rate is lower at higher altitude. On the other hand, at very low altitudes, now the density of the neutral particle is very high, but then the intensity of the solar radiation is very low. So that's why as well the ionization rates. So there is an optimum altitude where the ionization rate is maximum. And that's what gives actually kind of this profile of the ionosphere. Okay. The intense, the ionization rate, well, the intensity would change, but then the profile would stay the same. But of course, the intensity was changed. Yes, yes, of course.
Yeah, because there is an inertia.
Exactly. Yeah. Yes, yeah, yeah. So this is mainly, so, and the solar flux is actually given by this formula here, which depends on the solar flux outside, so at infinity here, which is the solar flux outside the atmosphere. And then it depends as well, of course, on the optical depth. Now, I will skip some slides, but this was actually in the 1931, Sidney Chapman, actually, who proposed a very simple mathematical model to explain the formation of these ionized layers in the ionosphere. And of course, there are some assumptions I will skip. Okay, let's. So, so if we consider only one type of gas, one, well, and that the atmosphere is horizontally stratified, so we consider very simple geometrically the problem. And then we also consider only monochromatic radiation, so only one wavelength. And that the atmosphere is isothermal, so that the scale height is constant as well. So basically, you can think that we are only considered one layer in the kind of the ionosphere. Well, you can actually show that the ion production rate for a given Zenith angle, so the Zenith angle is the angle between the vertical direction with respect to the direction of the sun. So if the Zenith angle is zero, this is, here you get the maximum actually ionization rate, actually. And Z prime here is a kind of reduced scale height. So is this? Well, yes, so it's, it's kind of the altitude with respect to a reference altitude. It's equal to the maximum ion production rate. So at the Zenith angle equal to zero. And then time the, so exponential this, well, variables. And the ratio of, so this, the ion production rate is, this formula is what is known the Chapman function. And so this is an example, actually, here. The Y axis is the altitude. The X axis is the ratio of the production rate over, so the normalized one over the maximum ion production rate. And from this also, from this formula, you can get as well the ratio of the density over N zero as well. So normalized kind of electron number density is produced. And you can fit, I mean, this, for a given Zenith angle, you can get this kind of different profile of the ionosphere. So for Zenith angle equal to zero, here you get the maximum ionization rate at, well, this altitude. But then, changing the Zenith angle, of course, it will be lower at 90 degrees. So. Okay, I can skip. I mean, one also important thing I wanted to talk about is the ionospheric currents. And that's very important, because actually, the ionosphere, it's coupled to the whole magnetosphere by providing some, let's say, electrical conductivity channels. And this plays a very important role, actually, in space plasma, since the ionosphere, it will connect the different regions electrically. And so this would play a role in the energy transfer and the momentum from one region to another. So if we take the classical Ohm's law, so in the absence of magnetic field, you have here, the current is simply equal, actually, to the conductivity of the plasma due to the collisions times the electric field. Now, if we add a magnetic field, as you know, so we obtain the generalized Ohm's law. And here, the formula is a bit more, more complex, let's say. So it is related to the electric field, but then we have here the electron velocity across B. So if we are parallel in direction, parallel to the magnetic field, then this term goes to zero. And here, we have what we call the parallel conductivities or we obtain the field-aligned currents. So the currents that are aligned with the magnetic field. But if we are perpendicular to the magnetic field, it's not as simple as the first one. Here, we can get two types of conductivities. So in both cases, we are perpendicular to B. Now here, the conductivity becomes a conductivity tensor, actually. And in the direction, parallel to the electric field, we have what we call the Peterson currents. And in the direction perpendicular to E, we have what we call the Hall currents. And here, in this illustration, so these are illustrations of the different conductivities or different currents. So we have the field-aligned currents, the Peterson currents and the Hall currents. And this will actually connect to the magnetosphere with the ionosphere. And it kind of will close the current system in the magnetosphere. Yes. Yes. Yeah. Yeah, so that's how actually, so kind of this whole system is connected with each other too. Yes. Yeah. Okay, so the ionosphere is in our solar system. So actually, all the planets, except one, they have ionosphere. And except Mercury, Mercury has a very thin ionosphere. But we, so it's basically, it doesn't really have an ionosphere. It has only a nexus sphere. So it's kind of the upper layer of the ionosphere. And also the moons around planets, they can have ionosphere. Also around comets, they can have ionosphere. And the rings of Saturn as well, they have their own ionosphere, actually, due to the photoionization of the charged dusts and the dust as well. So let's talk a little bit, how, how long do I have? Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. So. Yeah, so I will just give you example of the, how we can measure in situ, actually, or we could measure in situ the ionosphere of Saturn. And I will focus actually in the final phase of the Cassini mission, which started between April 26 until September 2017. And here onboard, and for this, I will show you measurements from the Langmuir probe. So again, the Langmuir probe is this instrument, which is onboard the spacecraft. And during this final phase, actually, it was completely spectacular, because for the first time, Cassini performed for 22 orbits and it crossed actually the gap between the planet and the main ring. And so for the, ah, this is maybe a video. So for the first time, we could actually sample in situ this region here, between the rings of the planet and Saturn. And also, we could measure in situ for the first time, charge dust as well and/or in this region. Okay, and then here you will see the different flybys or the different orbits during this final phase of the mission. You can see it here. Ah, yes. So every week, there was one crossing of this gap between the planets and the rings. Yes, every week. Yes, yes, every week we had one flyby. Yeah, but because this is the video, like. And so with the Langmuir probe, we could take in situ measurement in this region here, very close to the planet and the rings. And so we could measure, we could measure in situ the ionosphere of Saturn. So this is an illustration of all the orbits. The final orbit, it actually crossed, it actually was just the end of the spacecraft mission with, and so it was just, it plunged into the atmosphere of the planet and then it just evaporated inside Saturn. Yes. So it was a controlled kind of crash of the instrument, actually, of the spacecraft. And this is all the 22 orbits. And you see that this is, let's say, the closest approach. At the closest approach, the orbits, they cover different altitudes from the, from Saturn. And this is, I mean, in this region here, the closest, the innermost rings is called the D-ring. And the D-ring is very dusty ring, very thin, transparent ring. Now, I will show you a real image taken by Cassini, actually. This is a real image and it's basically kind of the same of this one. And. Yeah. And this is, this is the highest altitude of the orbits when it crossed this region. This is the D-ring and you see some of the orbits, they even, they crossed even inside the D-ring. So with this measurement, we could also probe in situ the D-ring region. And it was kind of risky, because the, the scientists, the engineers, I mean, they oriented the spacecraft in a way that the High Again antenna was facing the dust and all, facing the ring, so to protect the instrument. But it was very risky, because they didn't know what to expect, actually. And it went really very well. So for the first time, we could also measure in situ the rings of Saturn's, at least the innermost D-ring. And again, here I'm showing you the Langmuir probe instrument, which was actually developed in the Institute of Space Physics in IRF in, in Uppsala, Sweden. Okay, so here I'm showing you one example, so of the first, so this is the altitude profile of the electron number density for the first proximal orbit, proximal orbit. So this panel is the electron number densities and this one is the electron temperature. And let's say, there is lots of information on this curve. The blue, I mean, all this part of the plot is the inbound. And then, so in the northern hemisphere. And then the magenta line or the pink one is the outbound portion of the orbit. So this one is in the southern hemisphere. The blue, the dark blue curve here, it represents the electron number densities inferred from the Langmuir probe instrument. The red curve is the ion number densities inferred from the Langmuir probe. And so we also consider the ionosphere as a quasi-neutral medium. And this is, you can see it here, actually, the ion number density and the electron number density, they are coincide very well. And then the black curve here is the electron number densities, but estimated from the upper hybrid frequency, the cut-off frequency of the upper hybrid waves, actually. And just to show you here an example. So this is the spectrogram of, an energy spectrogram frequency time spectrogram, actually, of the wave during this proximal orbit. And you can see very broad band emissions, but more importantly, above the electron cyclotron frequency, you can see here a very narrow band kind of emission. And this emission was actually at the upper hybrid frequency. And from this basically formula, we can estimate the electron number densities. And this is the electron number densities inferred from this upper hybrid frequency. And it's, it's very well, consistent very well with the Langmuir probe measurements. I mean, the large scales, I mean, there is a small offset here, but at least the very small scale variations, it's, it's very well consistent. Now, you see, this is the closest approach here at the lower altitude. And you see that the ionosphere of Saturn, at least below 4,000 kilometers, is about the density. is about, the density is very high, about 1,000 for this case, particles per cc. And the temperature is very low, is about 0.1 EV. So it's a very dense and cold ionosphere. Now you will also note very clear asymmetry between the inbound and the outbound in the profile. And you see here, very sharp decrease, actually, in the electron number densities. Here, well, but here there was a data gap, but it's consistent for the other flyby. And, and a local increase in this region. And that was, this is really very nice, because this actually related directly to the ring shadows. So the A and the B ring are opaque to the EUV solar radiation. I can show you. Yes. So this is Saturn, again, one of the orbits of Cassini. And on the color here, it shows the electron number densities. And these are the rings. The first strings, the D and the C rings are very transparent to the EUV solar radiation. But this is not the case to the B and the A ring. They are very opaque to the EUV solar radiation. And so below, in the southern hemisphere, there was a shadow, actually, because of these rings. And so of course, in this shadowed region, there is much less ionization. And so we have much less electron number densities. So it was very, and in between these rings, you see here, there is kind of a gap. It was discovered by Cassini, so the scientist. So, so that's why it is named the Cassini Division. And it's transparent to the EUV solar radiation. And that's why we observe kind of a local ionization in this region. So it was very nice, with the Langmuir probe, we could actually observe this, the presence of this A and the B ring shadows. And also, we could study the effect of this A and the B ring shadows on kind of the transport in the ionosphere of Saturn. Okay. I think I will just, I will show this, and then I can stop. So here, I showed you only one example of the ionosphere of Saturn. But of course, we want to try to construct a standard ionospheric profile for Saturn. And so we combined all the proximal orbits. So these are all the orbits of Cassini around Saturn. The Y axis is the altitude as a function of the latitude here. And the color bar represents the electron number density. The crosses here represents the closest approach of Cassini to Saturn. And it's in the southern hemisphere, basically, is minus 5 degrees. And also, here, you can see it very clearly, the clear asymmetry between the northern hemisphere and the southern hemisphere. And this is, as I said, due to the ring shadowing effects. So if we want to construct a kind of ionospheric model for Saturn's ionosphere, we need to exclude these effects of the ring shadows. So we just focus on analyzing all the electron number density profile in this box here, so basically around equatorial latitude, between minus 15 and 15 degrees. And so we, so we can compare this electron number densities profile between the northern hemisphere and the southern hemisphere. So this, again, the Y axis is the altitude as a function of the electron number density, the color. Okay, let's forget about the color bar so far. In the northern hemisphere and then in the southern hemisphere. If we look at the northern hemisphere, you can see, well, that the electron number density increases, increases at, as we go down in altitude. And you can see that the density goes up about more than 10,000 particles per cc at the closest approach. So it's very high, very dense ionosphere, actually. And also, you can note that in the northern hemisphere, the, the profile are kind of organized. So above 4,000 kilometers, except this orbit here, but I will tell you why. The profile, I mean, the variation is kind of constant with the altitude. Then between, let's say, 2,500 kilometers up to about 4,000 kilometers, here the profile look like variable and more kind of structured. And then below 2,000 kilometers, the profile becomes smooth again. So as if we have kind of different layers here in the northern hemisphere. Now, if we compare to the southern hemisphere, this is not the case, actually. At all these altitude kind of regions, the profiles look like very structured and variable and not at all organized as is in the northern hemisphere. So why is it the case? To understand the difference between this northern and southern hemisphere profile, we looked at the, what is called the magnetic L shell values. The magnetic L shell value is the distance on, so the equatorial plane, where the magnetic field so crosses the equatorial plane, okay? So if an L, so very particular L shell value here is about 1.11. And that's where the D-ring starts, actually. Okay? So all the colors, so yellow or red represents actually basically the crossing of the D-ring by the magnetic field. So when we add this information to this profile, you see that, well, in the northern hemisphere, here, the ionosphere, so this yellow color is only above 6,000 kilometers, which means that in the northern hemisphere, above 6,000 kilometers, the magnetic field is actually or the ionosphere is coupled to the magnetic field that crosses the D-ring. But in the southern hemisphere, this actually happens at all these different altitudes. So this actually shows indirectly the role of the magnetic field in kind of shuffling or the structure of the ionosphere. But also, it implies the important role of the magnetic field in facilitating the coupling, actually, between the rings and the ionosphere of Saturn. And we have this clear asymmetry between both. Basically, because the, the whole magnetic field, the dipole magnetic field of Saturn is shifted towards the north. So we have also an asymmetry in the kind of the structure of the magnetic field.
Do you have currents along the rings as well?
Yes. Yes, yes. Yeah. And I mentioned this profile, this particular profile here. Why, this is the electron number density. Why for this one is much lower than the other ones? Actually, this, this profile is one of the cases where the Cassini was very close to the D-ring. And so when we look at the Langmuir probe data, we could see that for this case, actually, the electron number density was very low, because the Langmuir probe could indirectly measure the presence of negatively charged dust. That's why the electron number density was lower. So this is basically the Langmuir probe observations. The Y axis is the bias voltage as a function of time. And then the current is shown in the color bar here. So when we compute, it's not very clear here. So when we compute the different number densities, so the red one is the ion number densities, okay? The red curve. And this is the closest approach in this region. And let me check, because I forgot. And the electron number density, let's look only at the red curve and the blue curve. The electron number density is given by the blue curve. And the ion number density is given by this red curve. And you see, the ion number density is not equal to the electron number density. And we know that the plasma is quasi-neutral in the ionosphere. It should be quasi-neutral. So this means that we have additionally negatively charged dust that corrects for this quasi-neutrality. And that's how indirectly we could measure the presence of the negatively charged dust. So then, of course, so we took all, so the profiles in the northern hemisphere, because here we don't have any effect from the rings of Saturn. And we can kind of construct average ionosphere or standard ionospheric profile of Saturn. And based on this, only this observation, we can kind of categorize the ionosphere of Saturn's in three different layers. So above 4,000 kilometers, the profile look kind of constant between 2,500 kilometers and up to 4,000 kilometers, the density kind of increases exponentially. And then below 2,500 kilometers, the profile becomes smooth again. And we compared this average profile to the profile of the final plunge of Cassini that actually covered continuously all these altitude ranges. And you see that it's quite comparable, actually, the profile, where above 4,000 kilometers is quite constant. And this ray, in this layer, we have lots of variations. And then below the profile becomes smooth again. And then for these different layers, we can fit this kind of layers. And we can estimate the scale heights as well in these different layers in the ionosphere of Saturn. Now, I forgot to mention, okay, let me. So in this, below 2,000 kilometers, here, the let's say we will have, well, chemical equilibrium processes will dominate, because we are, we are at very low altitude. And in this range, we would have the diffusion kind of equilibrium processes that would dominate. Maybe these variations could be due to other kind of waves, other kind of transport processes, but it's very difficult to say with these data. And then above 4,000 kilometers, at very high altitude, the ionosphere starts to connect with the plasma sphere. And one last thing, maybe I wanted to show, yes. That also, I mean, we could detect, you see here, there is one peak. This, at very low altitude, at 200 kilometers from Saturn. But this, it doesn't mean that this is the main peak of the ionosphere. It could be one of the peaks of the ionosphere. And that's it, I think. I'm done, thank you. I, I wanted to talk about the ring shadowing effects, but I think I can stop here and but it will be in the presentation. I'm thirsty, actually, so I'll just drink water. Yeah, yeah, I will. No, I think it's just maybe the order in which they discovered them. I think maybe A was discovered in the beginning. A, B, C, D, there is the F-ring, the E-ring, and I missed one. But there's, I think it's just the order. And oh, no, no, easy. Yeah. Actually, yes, we do have, but I didn't show it here, because we no next. But maybe I can add some references, I mean, I, there are already some references. But of course, here I only talked about the Langmuir probe. Well, maybe I could have talked about other instruments as well. But there was also magnetometer onboard the spacecraft. And we could measure in detail as well the magnetic field, the internal magnetic field of Saturn. I forgot the value, but it's a very strong magnetic field, actually. But yeah. Yes, yes, it's much stronger than Earth. What I only remember is that, you know, the the inclination of Saturn's rotation axis is actually very well aligned with the axis of the magnetic field. And there is no inclination, actually. And they could calculate the angle, which was 0.00 something, so extremely low. So it was perfectly aligned, actually, with the yeah. Yes. So the elect, so I showed, the electron current actually increases exponentially with exponentially, and then at some point it saturates. Once the potential of, that we apply, it balances the potential of the plasma, that's yeah, yeah, yes, yes, yes. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Exactly. Exactly. And the velocity. The, yes. Yeah, yeah. Exactly. I'm sure that she's more expert than we on Langmuir. Yes. Yes. For this one, yes. I think, well, for this case, we are really measuring nanometer sized grains. So extremely small, and the speed of the spacecraft was very high. I forgot how much, so this well at the closest approach, yes, they dominate, but not all over the space.
Let's have one last question.
Yeah. So it's, okay, I have lots of future projects, but I can tell, at least for now, what I'm I mean, my background was really solar wind turbulence, that's what I did in my PhD. But then in my postdoc, and so far, I'm doing much more planetary kind of, or magnetospheric related kind of processes. Yeah. And now I'm actually mostly involved in the mass tax from analyzer instrument that I present you. So I'm kind of doing instrumental calibration as well for the BEPI Columbo mission. Yeah. Yeah, you're welcome, thank you. That's a challenge.